Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Jefferson. We'll start this evening with a prayer from Councilman Carroll. Will you please try this?
Thank you. Always remember, when God made you, he did so with a purpose and a plan. He saw all your days before you lived one of them and placed over you the covering of his protective love. He has allowed nothing to come into your life that has not first been screened through that love. His hand has remained upon you to this very day. He calls you by name. You are his beloved child, the apple of his eye, the delight of his heart. Today you are in the exact place he wants you to be and tomorrow he will be with you as he has always been, in goodness, in kindness, in faithfulness. Amen.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Prather.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here. Okay. And just turn my mic off. We'll start the meeting this evening with item six, a public hearing. Janice, could you, could you tell us what we're going to be talking about here?
Yes, thank you. This item was referred by the Planning and Zoning Commission and is in your packet as bill 2013-11. This bill pertains to the expansion and rebuilding of 2118 Shot Hill Woods Drive. It's occupied by Oscar's Diner. This is an amended PUD plan for this property. As you know, the property suffered a fire on January 30th and it destroyed the interior of the restaurant. In addition to repairing the interior, the owner wishes to construct an addition of a little over 1,200 square feet and add a parking lot addition to the rear of the building. Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application at their meeting on April 11th and recommended that it be approved. The map on the screen shows the location of the property on Shot Hill Woods Drive. This shows the areas that are, of the site plan that are being expanded. The existing footprint is shown in black, the expanded area is shown in blue. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Janice from Ms. McMillan, from any of the council members? If not, then we'll open the hearing and give folks both pro and con the opportunity to speak. Is there anyone here to speak for this, this bill? Okay, not hearing one. Is there anyone here to speak against? Okay, we'll close the hearing and are we, I guess I need to have you read that bill.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving an amended final PUD plan for land addressed as 2818-21 Shot Hill Road Drive and described as lots 95 and 96 of Shot Hill Woods subdivision, section four, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Okay. Are there any questions? Then are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Branch.
Yes.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Okay. Item seven, minutes and reports received and filed. We have minutes from, excuse me, Animal Control Section Monthly Report for April 2013, Public Safety Committee, February 28, 2013, Planning and Zoning Commission, April 11, 2013, Campo Technical Committee, April 4, 2013, Board of Electrical Review and Examiners, March 6, 2013, Board of Adjustment, April 9, 2013, Parks and Recreation Commission, April 10, 2013, and Historic Preservation Commission, March 26, 2013. They've been received and filed. We don't have to do anything officially. Okay. And now we'll have item eight, council committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration Committee, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you. The Administration Committee will meet Wednesday, June 5th at 8:00 a.m. and we will discuss the outdoor sidewalk cafe permits and possible changes and updates to those and also appointments by the mayor. Thank you.
And then Finance Committee chaired by, I forget who chairs the Finance Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, Sean. How could I forget?
My buddy. Thank you. The Finance Committee has not met since the last council meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May 28, 7:30 a.m. across the hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And Public Safety Committee, Rick Prather.
The Public Safety Committee has not met since the last council meeting and the next scheduled meeting will be, I believe, May 30 after the Brown Bagel meeting.
Okay, thank you. And Public Works and Planning Committee, I'm the chair and we have not met as well and our next meeting will be this Wednesday, which is a change for us. Normally we meet on Thursday, the 24th. We'll be meeting Wednesday, the 23rd at 7:30 a.m. across the hall. Are there any other committee or liaison reports? Okay, thank you. Next item is item nine, appointments by the mayor. We're doing the second phase of our council responsibilities and appointments. We're doing council liaison appointments for 2013, 2014. Everyone has seen a copy of them. Do I have a motion to accept the mayor's recommendation?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Item number 10, presentation from staff consultants and invited guests and I believe Ms. McMillan has an invited guest.
Yes, thank you. I'm Janice McMillan, Director of Planning and Protective Services and with me is Ralph Robinette, Chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm going to give you just a brief overview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The planning and development process may be thought of as a partnership between the private sector, the private development community, and the public sector, the city. Both public and private sides play important roles. On the public side, the Planning and Zoning Commission has a very important function and its function has been defined by state statutes since the 1920s. As creatures of the state, cities must follow the Missouri statutes which prescribe the duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission and those are laid out in chapter 89 of Revised Statutes of Missouri. Most cities refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission as if it were a singular body. In fact, the statutes recognize the planning side as a function separately from the zoning side of the commission duties. Section 89.310 provides that any municipality may make, adopt, amend, and carry out a city plan and appoint a planning commission with the powers and duties as laid out by statute. The statutes provide cities with wide latitude to plan and also provide powerful tools to implement those plans. The statutes authorize the city plans for a physical development of cities that include a wide array of elements: streets, public facilities, public ways, public grounds, places and spaces, utilities, the acceptance, widening, removal, extension, relocation, narrowing, vacation, abandonment, or change of use of any of those things, and replanning of blighted and slum areas. Section 89380 to 89470 lay out the relationship between the city plan, capital improvements, and subdivision approval, where the commission adopts the plan of a municipality, no street or other public facility or other public or private utility can be constructed or authorized without having the location and extent approved by the planning commission. It further authorizes that cities that have adopted a major street plan may restrict building permits and require that streets be public streets. It's clear that the statute grants authority to cities to preserve corridors for major streets through control over its subdivision and building permit processes. On the zoning side, the zoning commission is required if a city wishes to avail itself of the zoning powers of the statutes and those sections are 89.010 to 89.140, but the statutes specifically provide that where a city plan commission already exists, it may be appointed as a zoning commission. And in fact, in Jefferson City, we recognize the Planning and Zoning Commission as the singular body. The statute is also the source for that public hearing requirement. Prior to adopting or amending any zoning action or, in our ordinance, any PUD plan or special exception use also has to come to the city council for a public hearing. And it also is a source of that requirement where we notify adjoining and affected property owners within 185 feet. Also, the statute prescribes the membership of the commission, not more than 15 nor less than seven members. Those members are appointed for four-year terms and they're appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. Our city code amends that or takes that a few steps farther. Our city code provides for nine regular members and three alternates and at least one member is appointed from each ward and more rules and procedures are outlined in chapter seven, which is the boards and commissions, and chapter 35, which is the zoning code. The Planning and Zoning Commission is capably chaired by Mr. Ralph Robinette. Mr. Robinette is a resident of Ward One and he was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2002 and he was elected chairman in September of 2009. I'd like to introduce Mr. Ralph Robinette, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and distinguished members of the council. I'm Ralph Robinette. I am presently Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for extending me the invitation and the opportunity to speak with you tonight and briefly talk a little bit about our Planning and Zoning Commission. As you know, all members of the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommended for that committee by the mayor and then approved by the council. Like Ms. McMillan said, we presently have nine regular members and three alternates. These members bring a wide array of talent and professional experience to this commission. We have people that are involved in the selling of real estate, both commercial and residential. We have real estate appraisers, real estate inspectors. We have commercial developers, residential developers, engineers, executives from administrative positions. So they bring a great deal of talent and they're all volunteers. But we are complemented by an excellent staff that we have here, led by Mrs. McMillan, who's just an outstanding director and her excellent staff really give us a great deal of assist and support as we go about making our decisions. Our purpose is to study, review, and advise on most land issues and then they come before you. We must follow the city adopted, planned, and codes in making our decisions. We strive to have fair, open, complete, and consistent hearings and through that we follow then the adopted and fair processes of the hearings, where the applicants get due process, where their rights are respected, and where the public receives an opportunity to comment either in favor or opposed to any proposal that comes before us before our decisions are made. Now you can imagine on every proposal we have, we always have a proponent and most of the time we have opponents. After we make our decision, sometimes one or both parties are not totally happy with our decision, but our goal is to be fair, open, and when they leave the hearing, we want them to say, "At least I had a fair hearing. I got heard. I had an opportunity to say, to say my piece and to say my part." Going to bore you just a little bit with numbers, as everyone else does, it comes up here, but they'll be short numbers. In 2011, we heard 18 cases. 14 of those involved commercial issues, two were residential and then two were code amendments that we did. 2012, we had 22 cases, six of those were commercial, nine residential, five code amendments, and two annexations. In 2013, to date, we've handled eight cases, two of those being commercial, four residential, one annexation, and then one special land use for farming. Some of the most notable projects that we have done in recent years that have come before you are the Loggie Ridge subdivision, which is a single family unit development, Fairgrounds Acres subdivision, which is another family unit development, Brickyard Terrace subdivision, which included four complexes and family units, Cherry Creek, which is going to be residential units, the Riley Automotive Plasm, the JCMG Orthopedic Building and Women's and Children's Expansion, the Chick-fil-A that's coming to the Lowes area, and then the St. Mary's Hospital. That's a quick overview of what we do, how we do it. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be glad to take them at this time.
Well, I'll start off by telling you, thank you very much for coming. I've had the occasion to sit in on a few of your hearings and I've watched a few of them on TV and I must say you do an outstanding job of conducting the meeting in a very stressful environment at times and you've always, the times I've watched, you've done a great job of keeping your composer and managing the meeting and I'm very, very pleased with what you, the service you bring to this city. You've done a great job, in my opinion, as has your whole commission.
Well, thank you very much and on behalf of the commissioners, thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve you. Thank you.
I don't want to, does anyone else have anything? Carrie.
I would echo your comments and also I agree, I know that zoning can be some of the most difficult issues that we are faced with as a council and what you do with your commission is really essential to planned and orderly growth in our community. So I appreciate what you do and all the members of the commission, especially you for serving over 10 years in this volunteer position and we appreciate your experience that you're able to bring to this commission. So thank you, Ralph.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming and we appreciate you taking your time to be here. Have no, no one else listed under this, at this time, so number 11, I think. Janice, you have an announcement for us as well? She's, she's saying goodbye to Mr. Robinette. Janice, do you have an announcement for us on the landmark ceremony, I think?
Yes, the Historic Preservation Commission is hosting the Landmark Award Ceremony this Thursday, May 23rd at 4:00 p.m. in these council chamber, chambers and part of that will be recognition of the three properties being designated as landmarks and then they have some other awards that they'll be presenting at 4 o'clock.
You say Thursday?
This Thursday, May 23rd.
Okay. Any questions for Janice? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 12, presentations from the gallery and we do not have anyone signed up, so we'll move on to item 13, the consent agenda. Three items on the consent agenda. I think you indicated there weren't any questions on that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
We've got a motion and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. This, roll call, please. Or is it just a voice? Okay, it's a voice vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, bids over 50,000. Bid 2673 armored vehicle for the police department. Do you need to read that, Janice? Or, excuse me, fellas? Okay, okay. Chief, you have a presentation for us.
Thank you. Tonight, the police department is requesting authorization to purchase an armored vehicle for use by our SWAT team. I want to emphasize from the very beginning that it, it might be easy to look at this in simple terms of an armored vehicle. We approach it rather from the standpoint of safety. Safety for our community and safety for these young men that are seated here, which represent about half of our SWAT team and it's really about safety. We, over the years, purchase things regarding data retention, data gathering, patrol cars, things of that nature, but I can think of nothing more important to us than the purchase of this vehicle, probably in my, as I enter my 15th year here. We are utilizing or intend to utilize sales tax funds. This was part of the police equipment that we listed two years ago and we have been researching this purchase for approximately one year. I, I don't want to spend too much time because Captain Shoemaker has a presentation and I would defer to him, but I would say that, you know, it's reassuring to think that we don't need a SWAT team, but you know, it's not just the safety of these young men, but thereby the grace of God, should any of us be in the wrong place at the wrong time, our lives will depend on the actions of our SWAT team. At this time, with your permission, I'd like to present Captain Shoemaker.
Absolutely.
Who happens to be the division, our division commander who's charged with responsibility of commanding our SWAT team.
Am I on? There you go. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Lieutenant Weaver's handing out some information for you to look at while I make a few brief points about the purchase of the Lindco Bearcat that's in front of you this evening. First of all, as the chief mentioned, it is a privilege, kind of an honor, for me to be in charge of the SWAT team overall with oversight. With that, it's also humbling to introduce some of the members of our SWAT team that are here tonight. I'd like to take that time now. That's with me is Lieutenant Steve Weaver, who is the SWAT team commander. To my far right is Sergeant Jason Payne, Officer Paul Gash, Officer Robert Shear, Officer Jared Phelps, Detective, he just became detective today, Detective Kurt Fink, and Sergeant Pat McCutcheon, all of whom are active members of our SWAT team. I would like to tell you briefly about our SWAT team. We have, we started the team in the 1980s with about eight to 10 members and it's now evolved today to 23 members, five of whom are SWAT medics from the Jefferson City Fire Department and we are very appreciative of their assistance as part of our team. I would like to mention that despite the perception that Jefferson City is for some reason a sleepy little town and that, in that instance, as a matter of fact, SWAT is very busy and there are proactive efforts to keep our community safe. And over the last two full calendar years, our SWAT team has been activated over 80 times for high-risk narcotics search warrants, barricaded subjects, and high-risk arrest warrants. 80 times. During some of those this year, as a matter of fact, they have been a part of arresting over 80 persons involved in the distribution or use of heroin within our community and within the Cole County area as well. Our SWAT team is extremely active in training and assisting other jurisdictions when requested to, which includes the Cole County Sheriff's Department, Callaway County Sheriff's Department, Columbia Police Department, the Missouri State Highway Patrol, and the Missouri National Guard. Our team has a tactical robot which is utilized for surveillance and entry into buildings to minimize the risk to the team and when circumstances allow. This element of the SWAT team is subject to call-out within the entire Troop F area, was obtained at no cost to the city and has been used by neighboring agencies in situations where the use of a surveillance robot is a more prudent option than team entry into a residence. Our team is composed of officers from all sections of the agency. They are highly trained and very skilled. They instruct for various agencies as well as the Central Missouri Tactical Officers Association. They will respond as the tactical element for the Cole County Emergency Response Team as well as the AMRA Nuclear Plant in Callaway County. They have an average assembly time of approximately 30 minutes. Mission ready. These are men that go above and beyond what we as police officers are asked. They are willing to perform the most dangerous duty in policing, knowing full well they may take fire on every call-out. In fact, in August of 2012, while they conducted what was considered a routine narcotics search warrant within our city limits, the suspect inside opened fire on our team inside. They had, they took cover and they were able to coax him into giving up, so that one ended well fortunately for our team as well as for the suspect. One of the most important tools used by the SWAT team is a modern bulletproof armored rescue vehicle. While there are a myriad of intended uses for such a vehicle during SWAT activation, preparedness for all circumstances is the key. The vehicle used must carry tools and resources needed to accomplish the mission of the team, including gas and launching devices, RAM access tools, diversionary devices, and so forth. Additional uses of the rescue vehicle include providing a vehicle to accomplish evacuations and insertion of a tactical element of the SWAT team directly into an incident while providing protection for that element. The Bearcat, which we are discussing tonight, also has a RAM assembly to breach doors that are reinforced, which we are finding more frequently, as well as a device to deploy gas and distraction devices without exposing the officer or officers to potential dangers. Through the utilization of our SWAT medics and the Bearcat, the Jefferson City Police SWAT team would have the capability of extricating an injured officer or civilian within a hostile area due to the armored protection of the Bearcat itself. This is currently not an option with the Peacekeeper that we use. Please keep in mind this is not about the purchase of a vehicle. It's about officer safety. The current method of transportation, a 1980 Dodge Department of Defense Peacekeeper, which is owned by the Department of Defense and not by the city, will not reliably, reliably transport our team to the location of a search warrant. When it functions, which is intermittently, it holds only seven officers and is not resistant to any high-powered weapons. Our team, based on the growing amount of mass, random mass violent crimes across the United States, now unfortunately has to train for the worst. And for those that say it can't happen here, it did. July of 2003, the Modine Manufacturing Plant shootings. Left three people dead and five wounded after an employee began shooting within that business. Suspect left Modine and came to the police department where he was engaged with gunfire by one of our officers. Actually Sergeant McCutcheon was the officer that engaged him at the police department. The "it can't happen here" mentality no longer applies, so we prepare and we protect and we must make extra effort to protect those who protect us when we need it the most. In closing, our SWAT team is made up of officers with families, they have wives, they have kids, but all have made that commitment to respond to the most serious of criminally violent situations and have proven that commitment over the years of service with this team. They continue to work hard to ensure Jefferson City is a safe community and they take their role very seriously. Your continued commitment to approve this purchase is a 10 to 15-year investment in the lives of our officers as well as the safety of our community when the need arises. Happy to answer questions. Lieutenant Weaver is available as well for questions.
Thank you, Captain. Any questions for Captain Shoemaker? Or Chief Schrader for that matter, or for the sergeant?
I do have a question.
Yes.
What are the plans for the old armored vehicle if this is approved?
That belongs to the Department of Defense and at the contract we signed when we obtained the vehicle, it will go back to the Department of Defense. It is not our property.
Anyone else? Chief?
Thank you. I want to apologize to the Public Safety Committee.
One, I failed to mention that we presented this, our proposal, to the Public Safety Committee, who passed it on for council approval. And at that time, I was acting on information I had received that we had purchased that vehicle many, many years ago, approaching thirty years, and since I've been corrected. So, that, if you're wondering why, it was a mistake on advice, and then I also wanted to mention that if fifteen years, we're really looking at, you will do your math, about sixteen thousand five hundred a year, and I don't think fifteen years is something that's not unrealistic as far as how long we would utilize this vehicle. So, I wanted to add those two things. Thank you.
Is this diesel engine or gasoline engine?
It's gasoline.
Diesel. I noticed in some of the other specifications that some of the other cities use diesel. I didn't know if this one was or not. Uh, Mr. Hussey, did you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I saw you. Okay. I know, one of the things I noticed in your specifications, you indicated that this has an armor rating, I think, of E, and I assume that's the highest armor rating. Do they rate that, what, A through E, or how are they?
Well, I'm not completely sure on that. From the company, it's rated by the Department of Defense and from the United States Military, and that's what they use. So, it's the highest level that, and that's why it's the sole source with Linco. They're the only company that arm reserves vehicles with level E.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. What do we, you need reading? Pardon? Motion, second. Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the bid twenty-six seventy-three for the armored vehicle for the police department?
So, move.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess this would be for Mr. Nicholas. I know we talked about the sales of tax F fund. How much is in that fund? Is this a designated tax that's used, could be used for this? Or what? Could you please explain that so that we all be on the same page?
Sure, because I think that's, it is kind of misunderstood sometimes. You know, we've been talking a lot about the general fund and its troubles. This is the sales tax, capital improvement sales tax fund. It is a separate fund. It can only be used for capital projects, which are defined as building structures and long-term, large investment vehicles, which this clearly would fit in. We've also used it for fire trucks and things like that. It brings in a source of revenue, and the council had previously designated how that was to be spent. There are adequate funds in there for this purchase, and we should have no problem in funding it. Well, I could tell you how much comes in to the fund. We bring in about four point seven million dollars a year, if I remember correctly. Obviously, we're spending that all the time, and so, no, I couldn't tell you exactly what the balance is right now. I can tell you that we did, I did make sure that there is adequate funds in there. It's a cash flow issue more than anything else, and we should have no problem cash-flowing this.
Any other questions on this side? Question I have, I don't recall this particular item being listed as an item. Was it designated? I know there are a certain amount of money set aside for the police department. Is this just coming from those funds that are set aside?
Yeah, the plan that the council approved doesn't specifically mention the vehicle. It is in the funds that were available to the police. Certainly, I think internally, this has been their top priority for quite a while, but it is not specifically listed in the plan that way. I think it's just listed as police capital investments.
Okay. Rick?
I think to clear up the understanding, that's what my request was at the end of the meeting last time, and I think staff are working on redoing that schedules. That was my request at the end of the last meeting.
Your request was what? I'm sorry.
To provide us an updated version of those schedules. Those F and E, since we had voted to eliminate funds from some of those and clean that up, I'd like to have a revised schedule.
What you have is up to date.
Right. Okay, and I...
We revised that, I mean, maybe I'm not understanding you, but we revised that in March, and that is, that is the most current. I mean, I could update it to show there's a couple of projects that have probably moved a little further along, but mostly that, that should be up to date, other than I think the fire station is the only thing that's changed on there.
It was my understanding that we had some funds that were cleaned up, out of, and consolidated and brought forward, and my request was for us to get an updated version.
I'm sorry.
Those eliminated.
I'm sorry, I did not understand then what you were asking then. Yes, there are some extras funds, and those we will be showing in the contingency, and I will get you an updated version that reflects that number being correct. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any questions on this side? If not, are we ready to vote? Then, is this voice? Okay, it's a voice vote, so then, all in favor, make known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, bill's introduced. Item fifteen.
An ordinance amending Chapter One, General Provisions of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by increasing minimum penalties for fines.
And that was Bill 2013-15. I didn't read that. Let's see, that would be Mr. Helfer.
Thank you, President.
Yes, thank you.
This is a bill that came forward, I think, that Prosecutor Stumpy had discussed this with a couple councilmen, including Councilman Henry, about updating the minimum fines. In Chapter One, the city council has laid out a number of the minimum penalties for various offenses. It's been that way for a very long time. It hasn't been updated in five, six, seven years, and the prosecutor's concern was that maybe some of the minimum fines didn't adequately reflect what the punishment ought to be, or take into account, you know, current modern-day amounts. So, we updated most of these on a kind of a three percent increase, but he also had some specific requests, so you'll see some of them are a bit more than that. And this reflects his request, working with councilmen, and staff is certainly supportive of this. I think prosecutor, while the prosecutor and judge always have the ability to increase if they like, it does because of the volume, gives them an easy way to kind of figure out what the minimums are. So, it's a benefit to them and also notices the public up about the minimum punishment.
Okay, now, when we speak of minimum, is that the absolute minimum, or does the judge have the discretion to find below that?
He would not have the discretion to find below that, so this would be the floor.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Helfer? Okay, moving on to 2013-16.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2012-2013 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by recognizing revenue and appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Lockwood.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill amends the 2012-13 Parks Recreation Budget. Recognizing insurance claim, or any receipt of damage. Damaged several...
Why don't you start over, Bill? Just...
This bill recognizes revenue and amends the 2012...
Thirteen Parks Recreation Budget, some claim settlement related to windstorm damage at Bender and Washington Parks, and re-appropriates those funds to take care of some repairs, cleanup, and demolition work.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lockwood? Okay, 2013-17.
An ordinance amending the 2012-2013 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by reclassifying a position within the police department.
Mrs. Stroh.
Thank you. This ordinance requests the reclassification of a position within the personnel schedule, specifically a building service worker position, which is located in the police department right now. Due to the SIP, we had one employee retire within City Hall. He handled all of the maintenance and custodial work of City Hall and the annex. With that retirement, we are now having one employee, one building service worker in the police department is going to take over all of the maintenance needs of City Hall and the annex, as well as the police department still, and then also assist with some of the custodial work. So, the request is to upgrade this position, which, to a level, it would make it more similar to the building, or the maintenance worker positions in some of the other departments, such as Parks and Recreation.
Will there be a bill back for the, for work that the police department employee is doing at City Hall? Will the police department be compensated out of that department's funding?
Not for the City Hall, because it's all out of general fund, and for the, any work over the parks area, that would come through their rent and their administrative fees.
I just meant for an accounting, accounting purposes, if they were going to. I realize it's, money's all out of the same fund, so to speak, but I didn't know if you were going to go the extra step to account for the time or not.
That could certainly be done. I'm not sure if that discussion's been made with the finance department, whether or not we want to split his wages between those departments or not.
We don't typically account that way.
It's a lot of extra time and juggling numbers. Mr. Bray.
Gail, the, the new position will be the police maintenance worker position?
Yes, sir.
And is that person going to take care of the annex and the police department and City Hall?
And City Hall.
So, there's going to be one position that we'll look after there?
Yeah, to handle the maintenance work. There is still a building service worker in the police department that will handle really a lot of the custodial work of the buildings. And then we have one part-time person that does come in in the evenings and helps with the vacuuming and some of those types of things. So, between those two and a half positions, all of the maintenance and custodial needs will be taken care of for the three buildings.
And is a position eliminated by making this change?
Yes, the, because we have the one person that was a full-time position here at City Hall that handles City Hall and the annex, and that position, as a result of SIP, is not going to be filled at this time.
Thank you, Gail.
Anyone else, questions? So, you've actually replaced one full-time, or not replaced, but lost one full-time person, and your anticipation is that you can cover that necessary work without that one person? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, these two people will cover plus part-time employee.
Okay. So, okay. Any other questions? All right, then, moving on.